Delay, but I think we have all the essential people here tonight. Welcome to the Planning Board for the Town of East Fishkill, the April 16th, 2024 meeting. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do a roll call, starting with John Greenan.
John Greenan.
John Parry.
Lori G.
John Eichman.
Richard Campbell.
Ed Miyoshi.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Thank you, John, and thank you. Upcoming meeting dates are May 21st, 2024, and June 18th, 2024. I also want to repeat from last meeting, we told everyone there is a joint public hearing for the Lidl Warehouse Project. That's a joint public hearing between the Town Board and the Planning Board, and it will take place here at 6:00 PM on April 25th, 2024. We have minutes from the last meeting, but I doubt that everybody's had a chance to review those, so unless there's an objection, we'll go ahead and hold those over for the next meeting. First item on the agenda is RIGIO. This is a coordinated review with the zoning board.
We had a good look at the zoning board. They granted us our variances, subject to a secret determination from this board. So after we have secret here, we'll go back to the zoning board and make it official. But here tonight for procedural circumstances, but everything went well at the ZBA board.
Excellent. Thank you. So I will go through the negative declaration for RIGIO lot line realignment. Any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind folks that this is just a simple lot line realignment, and basically, we're doing a coordinated review with the zoning board because they have to sign off on the variances before we can actually, in the planning office, approve it. It's actually a minor lot line realignment, so we can do it administratively, but we need a negative declaration because it's a coordinated review. So once we give our negative declaration, so we approve the negative declaration, they can go back to the zoning board, get their approvals there, their variances, and then we can actually approve the lot line realignment.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from any board members before I do the negative declaration? If not, then we'll launch into a RIGIO lot line realignment, unlisted action, the reasons for supporting the determination that of -- help me out. Our action is what? Negative declaration. This project will not generate a significant amount of additional vehicles noise or emission levels, will not significantly affect rare endangered species of animal or plant or habitat of such species, it will not result in any impacts to historic or archaeological resources, will not result in any impacts related to the hazardous materials, it will not result in a significant effect on air, water quality, or ambient noise levels for adjoining areas, it will not be subjected to unacceptable risk of flooding or major geological hazards, will not have a substantial aesthetic effect, will not involve adversely -- will not involve adversely affect any surface water or groundwater, will not allow for improper uses within specific zoning districts, will not result in adverse cumulative impacts, will not result in adverse growth inducing impacts, and will not conflict with the town's comprehensive plan. Could I have a motion to accept this negative declaration?
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good night.
So the next item on the agenda is stack and store. If you'd like to just give us kind of a brief summary and let us know anything that's changed, if anything's changed from the last meeting?
Sure. Yep, my name is Jason Montagno from Soli Engineering. I'm a professional engineer from Connecticut. In terms of the plan since the last submission, nothing has changed, so we were just waiting on response to comments from HVEA and CPL to see if they had any additional things that they wanted us to address. And we just received the comment letters back, and it seems that we addressed most, if not all, of the comments from them. So in terms of the project itself, nothing has really changed since the last submission.
Okay. Any questions or comments by board members? Any questions or comments from our professionals? If not, then I do want to acknowledge we did receive one letter following the closing of the public hearing last month, and that letter is from a person by the name of Linda Gower, who lives on Sagamore Drive, and the primary comment that she had was concerns about considerable traffic and large vehicles, and the suggestion that perhaps this would be better placed in the I Park development. I think her comments have been taken into effect with our negative declaration, our resolution that we're going to be passing tonight, and was really responded to by the owner last time. I just want to maybe comment before we get into the measures that we're going to pass tonight. This all began in January of 2023, if I'm not mistaken. So for 15 months, the applicant has responded to a number of questions and concerns and suggestions by the Planning Board members, the town professionals, and by nearby residents. The residents, I do want to acknowledge that they came up with some very, I think, thoughtful and respectful comments and questions. Those things ranged from building design, some of our comments included things like stormwater management, screening views from neighboring properties, lighting, noise, traffic generation, security, hours of operation, impact on neighbors' wells. That's just a few of the items that have been responded to, and you'll see as we get into the resolution that they're all things that are conditions that the applicant has agreed to. But I just wanted to thank the residents because they're an important part of this process, and I think this went very well, all things considered. So I will go through the negative declaration. This negative declaration dated April 16th, 2024, for stack and store. The proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant adverse impacts on the environment for the following reasons: will not generate a significant amount of additional vehicles noise or emission levels, will not affect rare endangered species of animal or plant or habitat, will not result in any impacts to historic or archaeological resources, will not result in any impacts related to hazardous materials, will not result in a significant effect on air, water quality, or ambient noise levels for adjoining areas, will not be subjected to unacceptable risk of flooding or major geological hazards, will not have a substantial aesthetic effect, will not involve adversely affect any surface water or groundwater, will not allow for improper uses within specified zoning districts, will not result in adverse cumulative impacts, and will not result in adverse growth inducing impacts, and will not conflict with the town's comprehensive plan.
Before you take a vote, I just want to say one thing. This particular site did have a letter from DEC. The applicant hired a professional to do a habitat suitability assessment. There were conditions related to avoidance of impacts to threatened endangered species. The applicant has agreed to follow those restrictions and put them on the site plan application. I'm just mentioning it because it should be noted that the reason we can say that there's not a significant adverse impact to the rare and endangered species is because the applicant has agreed to follow the turtle monitoring protocol and also the Indiana bat removal of trees between the months, which is specified in the DEC letter. Those two conditions are also listed in the resolution, so they will be followed, and also, we've asked them to just place the notes that they asked for on the actual site plan. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Great. Thank you for that, Michelle. May I have a motion to approve this negative declaration?
So moved.
May I say?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. So, resolution of site plan approval and excavation and fill special permit. Stack and store with a number of addresses on Route 82. This resolution is offered by Planning Board member John Eichman, whereas the applicant is applying for site plan approval for an 82,700 square foot indoor climate controlled storage facility and associated--
Can you hold on one second? I'm sorry. There's two different numbers we have on the plans. One is 82,700 and one is 82,950, and I think it may just be that one of them was a holdover. Can you please confirm the right square footage of the site? It's only about 250 square feet off, but I think we should just make sure we reflect that in the actual resolution, and it's shown two different ways.
Yes, it should be 82,700 square feet.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So, an 82,700 square foot indoor climate controlled storage facility and associated parking fencing and stormwater infrastructure, whereas to construct the proposed storage facility and excavation and fill special permit per a special section of the East Fishkill zoning code is required, whereas the applicant is merging five lots into one 5.17 acre parcel, whereas the applicant received ARC approval on September 19th, 2023, whereas the Planning Board opened the public hearing on February 20th, 2024, for the proposed project and excavation and fill special permit, and closed the public hearing on 3/19/24, and whereas the Planning Board declared their intent to be lead agency for the coordinated review of the unlisted action on November 21st, 2023, and adopted a negative declaration on April 16th, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the excavation and fill special permit and site plan as represented on a map entitled Stack and Store, prepared by Soli Engineering dated April 27th, 2024, and last revised March 8th, 2024, with the following conditions: number one--
I think that's wrong. I'm going to type out. It should be 4/27/23, I believe, or 22, I think that's the, and last revised 3/8/24.
Okay. So amended. So under the conditions, number one, proof of all five lots have been merged into one lot. Number two, installation of a vinyl fence along the adjacent residential property line north of the site and in a color that is compatible with the proposed building to screen views of the site from the neighboring residents. Number three, extinguishment of the existing driveway easement to the satisfaction of the town attorney. Number four, establishment of a non disturbance easement on the residential lot to the satisfaction of the town attorney. Number five, establishment of a 20-foot non disturbance easement along the rear of parcel 720105. And, number six, establishment of 58 land banked parking spaces. Number seven, site plan to show secured fencing around the entire site. Number eight, earthwork operations and soil removal not permitted on Saturdays and Sundays. All soil removal must occur between the hours of 10:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Number nine, satisfactory resolution of all HVEA comments in memo dated 4/16/24. Number 10, satisfactory resolution of all CPL comments in memo dated 4/5/24. Number 11, PE certification on all stormwater improvements shown on the site plan. Number 12, automatic shut-off timers on all building wall packs. Number 13, landscaping and site maintenance agreement approved by the town attorney. Number 14, site plan to include hours of operation of 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM with staff present between the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:30 PM. Number 15, a water connection permit for the Hopewell North Water District and required fees. Number 16, a plan of the construction staging area to be approved by the town engineer. The construction staging area must be fenced and screened. Number 17, relocation of HVAC compressors to opposite side of building away from residential property. Number 18, front yard fencing, parents spacing and fence design and color to be approved by the ARC, close parents. Number 19, escrow for an environmental monitor during construction in the amount of $10,000. Number 20, all escrow accounts must be current. Number 21, satisfactory address all fire advisory board comments. Number 22, satisfactory address all comments in the New York Department of Environmental Conservation letter dated November 30th, 2023. Number 23, site tree removal is limited to between the months of October 1st and March 31st based on the March 13th, 2024 Threatened and Endangered Species Habitat Suitability Assessment Report. Number 24, include the turtle avoidance measures listed in the March 13th, 2024 Threatened and Endangered Species Habitat Suitability Assessment Report. Number 25, provide copy of rental agreement prohibiting storage of lithium ion batteries as defined in the East Fishkill zoning code. Number 26, approval from Dutchess County Health Department. Number 27, approval of a highway permit from New York State DOT. Number 28, payment as determined by the town engineer for unauthorized water usage of the fire hydrant at Route 82 in proximity of site.
We have one, we have the stormwater maintenance agreement is the number 29, and then I believe the applicant wants to discuss two of the conditions with us. Number, let's see, number eight, and number seven and eight, I believe, right?
So let's see. So number four, I'd like to actually start with number four. We just want to make sure that there is actual suitable language, just to ensure that we could also be able to grade and landscape and remove that house. So just something in language for that.
So if you recall, there's one parcel, that's a residential parcel, which they're proposing that there'll be no construction on. There's also some ruins of an old home on that. They want to be able to go in there, remove that, and do some grading of the area once they remove the structure. But we don't, we want to make sure that in the future that there's no disturbance to that site, no development on that actual residential lot. So we can adjust the language, we'll have a non disturbance easement, and I believe, we don't have the attorneys here tonight, but I believe we can put into that easement language, which would allow you to maintain or get rid of that house, demolish that house, and at least, you know, get the area so that it's clean and safe, and then we can put the non disturbance easement after that.
Right.
Brian does limit the language to demolition activities.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
In the next one?
Sure.
October 31st.
Yes, so number seven, so there's one just about the security fencing around the entire site. So on our plans, we have security gates, we have cameras, we also have additional fencing. So we believe that that should be more adequate to prevent people from going into the back of the site that do not have authorization, and we're also monitoring them as well through the cameras. So we just wanted to get some clarification on if you're still requesting that a fence be around the entire site. We also have fencing along residential properties as well, and then we also have fencing along the stormwater basin, so.
We don't--
Cosmo Marfioni, president of BDC.
Yes.
We don't want the place to look like a jail, right? Right, so I think, well, what we want to do is, the back, the back will be a fence, like the stockade fence, right, coming along the side where the residential areas are, and then we have two gates on either side, and we like to leave the front just with the split rail fence around the pond, which is a nice look.
Scott, this was something that I think we talked about a few days ago when we met about this, was your intent, does that meet the intent that you had in mind for security fencing during construction?
So I think--
Are we talking about the split rail, or are we talking about the staging area?
No, we're--
This is for around the entire site for the site--
I apologize. I apologize.
This is number seven, right.
Okay.
So I think what happened here was originally, they had shown some chain link fence, and then we asked if they could actually upgrade the fencing along the residential property so that the folks, the house right to the north would see more of a decorative fence rather than a chain link fence. And then, once they did that, we thought that they maybe had just forgotten to put the chain link fence back in, but they had decided, I guess, once that fence was in and the gates were in, that they might not need the fencing, and I'm assuming it's to the rear of the parcel.
Yeah, now I remember. We had the gates in the front entrance coming in instead of in the back, yes, so, yes.
Okay, so they modified it, and we thought maybe they had inadvertently left the layer off with the fencing, but he's saying, actually, they don't want to put the chain link fence to the rear of the property, right? Is that what you're saying? So--
But the plan that they brought to us showed that, right?
The one revised did not, though. The last revision did not show it, and that's what we, that's why there was confusion, because once they put the vinyl fence in along the side, they removed the stuff in the back. So the question I think they're asking us is, are we okay with that, or are we not okay with that? And why don't you just describe exactly, starting from the front of the site, where the fencing would be? It would run along the northern property line, and it would be, it would separate the backyards of the other two parcels that are on Clove Branch as well? Like, would it go all the way back?
It runs along the retaining wall. It cuts right and runs along the retaining wall, top of the retaining wall?
Yeah, exactly. I believe we show on our site plan, fencing there, fencing along the northern property, so it's just quite that screening. So in essence now, it would just be the access gates that would be right at the front side going, I'm sorry, the left side going up the drive and around the back, and then you would have the security gate on the downside.
Okay, and then the fencing in the front would only be fencing around the stormwater basin, which we're asking that they go to the ARC to determine more decorative fencing, because right now they have split rail, which may or may not be okay, depending on what type of strip, split rail it is. So we're asking the ARC weigh in on that, because it's going to be so prominent right along Route 82. So they've agreed to that. That's one of the conditions to get final sign off on the site plan. But the fencing was never intended, I don't believe the chain link fencing was ever intended to be in the front of the site. It was really, it's really now just the rear of the site, right, that you're proposing not to fence?
Well, or from where the vinyl fence ends at the end of the retaining wall, does chain link then--
Does chain link down that edge of the site turns around, right, and to the gate?
Back to the--
Right. But nothing in the front.
So people can't just walk into the back of the building from outside?
Okay.
So it's around the three sides of the back to the gates, and then just not in the front?
Yes, exactly.
Because there's elevation issues at the back that they could not have fence, right?
No, they're going to have fence up--
No, that's what I'm saying. I guess we're just trying to clarify that. So basically, no fence in the front.
No fence in the front and coming into the side up to the gate.
Understood.
Other than around the pond?
I understand that.
So let's change the condition to say, site plan to show revised security fencing. Is it on that way now, or is it missing it? Because you--
It appears to be missing it, because all they show is, are the two gates, but they're not attached to anything.
Okay.
So we just need to make sure there's a hook in from those security gates to one of the more decorative vinyl fencing, just to make sure the back is secure.
Okay, so I won't, I'll get rid of around the entire site and just say, site plan to show revised security fencing, okay?
Perfect.
Okay.
And then I think the other one that you wanted to talk to--
Number eight, yes.
Was earthwork operations.
Yeah, so trucks, they start in the morning. They start at 7:30, and essentially, the way it goes, it's like, you load five trucks, for instance, like at 7:30 or whenever we're allowed to start working, and then they leave, and they don't come back for another hour and a half, depends where they're dumping it, right? So I just got off the phone before we came here with our side excavator, and he said it would definitely cost a ton more money, and the truckers, they don't like to work, you know, five hour days or four hour days, and it's tough to get overtime. So he said if the board would allow us to do that first run in the morning, that would be appreciated.
Got it. So the times that you're suggesting would be?
Whenever, what is the legal time that we have to start working? 7:30, 8 o'clock in this zone?
I think it's 7:30 is the actual--
John, can you reread what the condition says?
So the condition number eight is earthwork operations and soil removal not permitted on Saturdays and Sundays. All soil removal must occur between the hours of 10:00 AM and 5:00 PM.
Right, that's the problem that we're, is that--
So I think--
So we can, I think, address that, two things. I think we ought to have federal holidays in here, too, right? We don't want July 4th and Memorial Day, that kind of drives, right? So we want to add to, and I think that, you know, you have a house right to the north of you, and we want to be respectful of that house, and so it's not only trucks, but it's the earthmoving equipment as well, right, that fires up in the morning and all that. So if you're loading out at 7:30, that means the equipment's firing up at 7:00, and you got a house, you know, right next door. I think if you could develop a plan that shows your either permanent or temporary access to the south of the site, farthest away as possible from those houses, even got houses across the street, right, and that you can work your operation from the south at least at that early hour. You know, later on in the day, you want to move from--
I think we could do that.
But I think if they could develop a plan showing we're going to, to the greatest extent possible, be as far away from the house as possible there.
I think--
Because I understand what you're saying about the hours and all that, you know, from a practical standpoint.
Yeah, because at the very beginning, the site machines are going to be starting at 7:30, but I'll just make sure that they start on the southern end of the site, and then try to leave some of the work on the northern end after the, you know, the 9:30, 10 o'clock hours.
Got it. And was that a plan that you'd like to have submitted to you, Scott, for approval? Well, yeah, because I just want to see the entrance out onto 82, whether that's going to fall in line with a permanent entrance, or you may come up with a temporary entrance to facilitate that early on in the process. So just, you know, get something on paper that we can all look at and agree to.
We'll give you a logistics plan--
Yeah.
That shows all the temporary--
Right, just so we can demonstrate we're as far away from the homes as possible.
Right, but obviously, we're going to have to dig from that side as well, but what we'll do maybe is we'll just--
I think you can work through that.
We can work through that. We just can't, I can't require my guy to only start at 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
Nobody will work for me.
So we're expanding it then to the 7:30?
Yeah, so what I think we're going to change the number eight to, earthwork operations and soil removal not permitted on Saturdays, Sundays, and federal holidays. And then we'll say soil removal, below, we have a condition about the construction staging area, so maybe we need to say that a pre-construction meeting to determine, you know, pre-construction meeting to determine--
We always have a pre-con meeting. Typically, we always have a pre-con for a project of this size, and at that time, they can bring in some of these plans, and we can hash through it then, so.
So we'll just make sure we mention that, that during the pre-construction meeting, all soil removal times and hours will be discussed with the town engineer?
That's fine.
Great.
And we'll submit a logistic plan. I think that's--
Yeah, because you got to also submit where you're staging as well, so.
Yeah, that's--
You can do it all, if you can get it to us in advance at that meeting, that would be helpful, so.
And then, and then the other thing, or comment number 28, I like to apologize for what happened. Just a matter of, one of our junior guys got the email from the Water Works folks, and instead of calling them, went there with our third party and never advised them that they were there, and they did the hydrant testing. So I apologize for that. I apologize to the board.
Got it.
Sometimes this stuff happens.
Thank you.
Some type of which condition?
And then you want to add on the 23rd that we're going to ask October 31st?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to look at the note. On 23, it said site tree removal is limited between the months, between October 1st and March 31st. We're just going to check to make sure it's not October 31st. I'll have to look back at the DEC letter.
Okay, and one more comment, I'm sorry. Number 12. Number 12, we want those lights, don't we want those lights to be motion lights?
Yes.
Not shut-off lights?
Motion.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
No, thank you.
So the motion will be amended with those comments that we just went through, and will be written down by our town engineer. May I have a second for this resolution?
Second.
So we'll do a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Donald Pepe.
No.
John Greenan.
Aye.
John Eichman, I'm an aye. So we have all ayes except one no. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The next items on the agenda are actually going to be deferred. The Lidl Warehouse and I Park Lidl will both be deferred to the next meeting. Of course, we will be seeing them at the joint public hearing. So the next item to be considered is JFE Associates.
I'm John Kinnon from the Empire State Huskies.
Hi, John.
Mike just called me, and he's not able to make it, but he said that he got a letter from the town engineer, and he forwarded it to me, and said that everything was resolved.
You mean from the consultant? Is that from--
Yeah. You're talking about my 415 letter?
Yes.
Okay. They addressed all the plan-related comments. The only new request is the town's looking for a 20-foot wide utility easement along the front of the property, parallel to Route 52. So I don't know if that was conveyed to you or not.
Well, he just texted, he's texting me as I'm here, so.
It's number six in my letter. I have a copy of my letter here if you want.
There's something about the easement in front, yeah. He's writing that.
Okay.
I'm going to have to ask the owner. I could ask the owner for that.
Okay. Apart from that, all are--
We're off. We're, we're off. Is that what you're asking or is that, am I necessary?
Oh, the town was looking for a 20-foot wide easement strip
From 52, right.
From 52 in, just 20 feet wide for
Utilities.
Utilities.
Future utilities. I can't, I can't answer that, but I, I could get an answer for you.
Sure.
And Mike also just said that he did go to the rec board and they were fine with the proposal to approve.
Okay. And did, do we have any, any other items from some of our other engineers, including traffic, parking kinds of things, Michelle, at this point?
Um, they, they showed a sufficient amount of parking for what they're proposing to do, assuming, again, we're, this is assuming there's going to be no tournaments or anything like that happening there, just practice fields alone. So they're showing sufficient number of parking spaces. Um, I just want to remind everyone about the process. This is a, uh, they require a special permit, which is, um, basically administered simultaneously with the site plan approval. So at this point, um, I think we may be ready to schedule a public hearing because you have, it's required as part of the special permit for outdoor recreation. So we would schedule a public hearing. We'd hold it at the next meeting. If all goes well, we could close the public hearing and approve the project at the next meeting, for the field at the next meeting.
Michelle, I have a comment also. Um, there is no ADA parking at the site.
Right.
I went out and did an inspection.
Okay, so we need to, we'll just need to, you'll have to either, um, get a little handicap sign and maybe, um, a blue, I don't know what you call those, a curb block?
Like a demarcation or something?
Yeah, to, to show that there's, and you probably are going to need, um, I think at least two spaces, maybe more.
Probably one near the field and one near the dome.
I'll look, I'll look, I'll count them up again and figure out how many you're going to need. It, it depends on how many overall spaces there are. That's how they determine how many handicap spaces are needed. Um, actually, you can ask Mike to show that on the plan because he'll have to revise the plan to show that.
Okay.
And if we were to issue a special permit for this, can we limit it?
Yep, you can put conditions on the special permit. So right now, the special permit language is, um, they meet all the se, the requirements. Um, just see what they say about. They also allow you to, to do parking relief if you wanted to. Um, at the discretion of the planning board, outdoor recreation developments may be accompanied by operational restrictions that limit the site's hours and days of operation to avoid noise, lighting, and traffic impacts neighboring properties and other operational restrictions. So if you determine, like you could put in that no tournaments could be played or something like that, that's what you want.
And/or timeline, like, let's say we don't give this as a carte blanche, you know, forever to have this, um, ability here, that we limit it to a window of time where they would have to come back to us.
To renew this.
And I'm not saying months, you know, a year, two years, whatever we decide, but it could be limited based on that too.
Yep.
And they've also placed notes on the plans, uh, stating that no new site lighting is proposed and any grading other than in the areas shown for the infield areas would require planning board, uh, to put on, that they'd have to come back, so.
Thank you.
Another condition or two you could have to add.
So if you have any, so, because we'll be doing that at the next meeting, if you have any conditions that you would like to consider adding, you can send them to me because you have the discretion to do that and I can review them and then we can talk about them when we-
Yeah, I just would say some protective covenants for the town and this thing, you know, we're, it's something different that we've never seen before, maybe in my time I've not seen. So I think that we should limit its, um, timeline and some of the things that would be attached to it so we can see that it's a functional operation and not just going, you know, something that could technically go awry and not become a burden for the town to have to come back to and, you know, come after if there was significant issues.
Or change of management.
Yes.
Right, like, you know, you decide to sell to another softball company or club, whatever it might be.
Yeah.
Well, right, we would have to make sure that that
Correct.
Or that if they were going to continue, that it would come back to us. Um, what is the town's enforcement ability if they, we were to have a tournament or a tryout and bring out hundreds of people?
So if, if it's a condition on the, um, special permit, then, um, Matt would likely go out and put a stop, you know, not, it's not stop work.
It would be a code compliance issue.
Would say it would be a code compliance violation and, um, and basically they would have to cease operations.
Okay.
Okay. So we do need to schedule a public hearing. Uh, generally, that would probably be the next month. Uh, with that, your engineer here, it's probably a little hard for you to be sure that that's going to work out, but we can, we can go ahead and schedule it and then you can let us know. Does that make sense?
And has he met the requirements with fire advisory? That was the other thing. I wasn't sure of if he had spoken to them or shown them.
They, they did indicate, Dave, you mentioned that you were less concerned about some of your safety issues
Yes.
based on the layout that you observed.
Yeah, due to the change of the layout, we're happy.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, so I will accept a motion to establish a public hearing for J F E Associates at our May 21st, 2024 meeting. So moved?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we will see you then. Um, the public will be here, so anything that you can have Mr. Gillespie bring with him that, that kind of shows what you're doing, how you're doing it. And even if you can give us a bigger representation of the net systems that you discussed with us last time would be helpful.
And if we could, if you could have copies available for all of us, it was hard to kind of understand some of that.
I thought, well, okay.
Great. Okay, so we'll see you next month. Thank you. Um, so Mike Gillespie knows what he needs to do. He needs to actually jump into action right away, get in touch with Jackie Keenan and, because notices need to go out to, to people.
Just help me here. I'm going to just tell Mike we're on for next month.
We're on for next month and, and he should know what to do. He should contact the planning department.
I hope he knows.
Yeah, he does.
He'll know.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, John.
Okay.
Next item, uh, McDonald's. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm George Givarakas. I'm here to represent the, uh, application. Just a little word. That was supposed to, uh, print this out.
Yeah.
I don't, can you hand it over?
Just to get my email here.
Yeah, I only got five seconds. I didn't know how many.
No worries.
Sorry.
I'm just going to do a quick summary of this one. Um, as you may recall, McDonald's, we approved McDonald's drive-through improvements not that long ago. Um, when we were out, I think, doing some of the inspection of the construction, we noticed that there was a container online, had been there a long time, but it was sort of hidden. So it hadn't been noticed before. A what? A container.
A C container, like a C box.
A shipping container.
Storage unit.
A storage unit. And, um, as a result, we asked them to, um, basically fix the exterior of it. Um, we're, you know, we're having some issues with containers just showing up on sites all around town and we, they're not permitted. So what, um, the applicant has, uh, agreed to do was to fix the facade of the shipping container, make it look like a shed. Um, and he's proposed, and you'll see on the, on the boards that he's standing out, what he's proposed to do. And, um, it is, it's existing there, so we told him we need to revise the site plan to, um, amend the site plan approval to show that the, the shed has been modified. Um, they did provide pictures, but they weren't dated. So, um, I, I think what I need to do is in the resolution, the site plan approval, I, I will try to reference the email that, that the pictures were submitted in. That's probably the only way we can do it because there's no actual formal, um, dated plan with the pictures. Or I, or I could say as presented at the planning board meeting this evening. Okay?
Now, would the facade of this container, you know, what you're doing here, match the facade of the building?
Correct.
Okay.
The colors are to be complimentary of the building?
Yes.
Yeah, correct.
All right.
And, and the storage unit, it's all within the town code as far as for shed, as far as the setbacks and property. 15 is required. It's over 40 feet away from the property. It's hidden behind the trash enclosure.
Yeah.
And I tried to show that in one of the renderings. And there's also evergreen screening forward of it, so it's not very visible, but still, just with the aesthetics of it, to make it look more of quote-unquote shed, uh, we're going to just dress it up so it's , uh, more palatable to, to be there.
And size-wise, it meets the requirements of the town?
Yes, it's within the, yeah, within the allowable for shed, correct. So this is, this is just so that it falls under that classification of a shed.
Okay. You don't need vehicle access to it though, right?
No.
It's just like pedestrian access?
Correct. So this is literally just, you walk behind, it's, uh, right behind the curb line, behind the trash enclosure. And its purpose is dry goods only for cups, coffee cups and soda cups. This particular store is unusually small. I don't know if you've been in there, but there's also not many seats in there, not much storage in there. And even though it's a, a healthy store in business, uh, they, they need more storage. So they, they cannot afford not to have this unit. So we're just asking that we, we comply any way possible so we can keep it and dress it up so it looks good and keep the unit.
Any other questions or comments by board members? Uh, anything from our professionals?
No, I just made a, I made a modification to the "now therefore be it resolved" section, so when you get there, I'll read it.
Got it. Okay. And David, any comments? No. So, we have a resolution of amended site plan approval for McDonald's drive-through improvements. Name of applicant, McDonald's Corporation, location 967 Route 376. Resolution offered by planning board member John Eichman. Whereas the applicant is applying for an amended site plan approval for an existing shed and whereas the planning board determined the approval of the shed is a minor site plan amendment and no public hearing is required. Whereas the proposed action is a type-two action and no further seeker review is required, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the 20-foot metal container, which will be modified to look like a storage shed.
Okay, this is where I'm going to come in. Modified to look like a storage shed per the renderings presented at the 41624 planning board meeting and as shown on the ASBIL survey.
Okay, and as shown on the ASBIL survey is represented on a map entitled McDonald's USA LLC, prepared by Jody Lounsbury, dated 7/27/23, and amended site plan for McDonald's drive-through improvements dated 8/2/18/22, last revised June 29th, 2022. Be further resolved within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Uh, we'll do a roll call approval. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Board member Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Donald Pepe.
Aye.
John Greenan.
Aye.
John Eichman, I'm an aye. Thank you. It's very attractive.
And I'll second.
Oh, sorry.
Could somebody second?
Yes.
I second.
Okay, Lori. Sorry, I thought I heard a second. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is Anoteco Wine Bar, 811 Route 82. Is there anyone here for the applicant? Um, I think we can probably just take a minute to take a look at the plan that was presented. Is that right?
Let me see if I can pull, I don't know if I can pull it up. Um, do you guys all have it in front of you?
We, we have a paper copy. So I think by, by way of review, this is a proposed wine bar, um, that we got the details on at the last meeting. The concern had to do with, with having a proper site plan since this never had had a site plan.
Correct.
And to determine if there's sufficient parking and other requirements for any kind of site plan approval.
Correct. This is an old, um, plaza. There was no existing approved site plan for it. Um, they want to take over, the wine bar wants to take over the old, I think it's an accountant's office, um, and it would be located next to the existing wine store. Basically, the issue is that we're getting tight on parking in some of those plazas and we wanted to make sure that we had, um, properly marked parking. Uh, this, in this particular case, the wine bar would be, uh, hours of operation, main hours, peak hours of operation would be off of any of the other uses there. So they could utilize the post office and the, um, flower stores parking area.
Yeah.
The only, the, all, both buildings, the, the post office building and the building with the wine store are all on the same lot, just so you know that. Um, there is some issues with the, behind the existing plaza because that area is not, uh, it's not paved and there's been some issues with drainage there. But there is additional, there are, I think, a number of additional spaces behind the post office, but I think what they're trying to show with this, with this site plan is that they have enough spaces in the front because that's where they think most people are going to park. Um, so at this point, I think they, the property owner is hoping to make improvements at some point. We just don't know when those are going to happen. And, um, the wine bar, the, the gentleman that wants to do the wine bar wants to make sure that the planning board is okay with what it is before he goes to the expense of doing a, a full site plan.
Michelle, you said the hours of operation are completely different, so?
I think the peak hours of operation are completely different. I don't, I don't believe it'll be open during the day. I can't remember what he said, um, what time he said it would be open, but.
I thought it was like 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on weekdays and, and possibly midnight on weekends.
Right, something like that.
So we don't have any?
So can, what is our responsibility in considering the parcel next to it?
So your responsibility would be technically, I mean, okay, so the, the planning board has discretion to waive parking, to allow for shared parking, so that's something you can do as, as per special permit. They haven't requested that yet because remember, this is a sketch plan, not a formal application, but you do have that discretion. But the issue was that, um, we were, we wanted to see what was actually out there and because there was no existing site plan, we wanted them to draw it up for us and also we wanted to be able to look at, you know, how you would access, if you were to park behind the, the, um, post office, for example, how you would access the front. Um, because I do think the area behind the building would be a little sketchy at night if people were walking back there. So, um, so there might have to be a, some sort of, I don't know what we would do, but maybe we'd have to cone off some of those areas or require him to do something. But I think that's where they're trying, they're trying to understand what the planning board might allow and might not allow as far as parking and location and number of spaces. Um, he did mention that during, I think, the, um, peak hours for the restaurant that's located in the plaza next to him, that sometimes those, um, folks park in his area. There's, you know, some shared parking going on just naturally. We cannot penalize him for that, but we do just need to be aware that there is a certain amount of parking demand there and, um, which is a good thing because it's an active night, but we, we want to make sure that we're being safe and careful with how we park people, especially people that might be drinking, right? So.
So that was my question, was because the two parking lots are connected, can we consider those demands, those parking demands when considering this? Or do they have to be kept completely separate?
For the restaurant, I mean, the restaurant that's next to it, we can't-
And Dunkin' Donuts, or if the hair place stays open late, or whatever it might be.
So technically, we, we can keep that in the back of our head, but we can't really consider it. We can't penalize him for having, for not, we can't make him park for El Guacamole, for example, or for the, the Mexican restaurant. But we can understand that because there is a lot of parking there, there might be people parking in areas in the back just because they can't find parking up front and they may just go to the back naturally. So what does that mean as far as us looking at the back to make sure that it's safe and that there is a way for people, because if you go further back, there's definitely paved parking.
Sure.
But then they would have to walk from that location around and we'd want to make sure.
But they could sign it that it's for patrons of his establishment only to park.
They could sign it as well.
And then it becomes the neighbor's problem to take care of his back.
Yes.
Right.
Exactly.
Is the parking behind the post office eliminated at night?
I don't know, actually. I don't know that answer to that. It's not.
It's not. There's just some lighting on the loading dock of the post office.
So those are the questions, like, you know, how people would get from the back to the front safely and, and, um, you know, would there be, I think, you know?
Does the gravel drive, as it's listed on here, need to remain a drive?
That's the area that's between the two buildings?
Yes.
So, um,
Cone off.
That could, that should not be a drive. That should be coned off, in my opinion. And I think that that was a location that they were thinking there might be outdoor seating, like they could actually put, um, borrowers in there.
But then we'd have to be cognizant of fire safety and their accessibility too to get back there, God forbid if there was something happening.
Right.
And then I know that there's like drainage back there. Isn't there like a swell or something behind? There, there's have, have to be some kind of, I don't know, if you put blocking there or guardrail, like I can't remember. I'd have to like go physically back there and look again.
So I feel like there's a ton of potential on the property, but it's hard to say without knowing what the, the owner has intentions of doing, what the possibilities could be.
Right. I mean, he was here at the last meeting, so I was sort of expecting that he would have been here tonight to, to talk us a little bit about it.
And it was odd how he really didn't appear. He kinda, just kinda appeared at some He kinda, just kinda appeared at some point. But the other thing is, are the two buildings, does he own both buildings?
Yes.
And they're actually all in the same, well, it's weird. The one building with the wine store is its own lot, just the building itself.
Okay.
And then, but it's on the, you know, basically on the lot with the post office.
So they're separate deeds?
They're separate deeds, but it's, one of them just has a building.
But don't you think that would have to be cleaned up, too? Because God forbid if he sold the building, then what happens? Then you're left with somebody else owning all the parking and the land around it?
It'd have to be an easement, then.
Yeah.
Parking easement.
So, I mean, I just wonder, the tricky thing is, there's a property owner that has to do stuff for this property, and then there's an applicant coming in just to move into a store.
Absolutely.
So we're, I'm trying to weigh the two, and we're trying, and I think basically the applicant that's just trying to come in to develop the wine bar is understanding that there's some existing, you know, considerations, and he wants to kind of make sure that he doesn't go too far down a path if it's not something that's possible.
Well, with all due respect, then he should be talking to the building owner.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying that he's not forward-thinking in coming here, but it really is going to be up to the building owner, because if we say that these are the requirements, and it's going to cost him X amount of dollars, well, then that's the building owner's decision, not necessarily, unless the, you know, there's going to be a leasehold improvement by the tenant to be able to do this, and he's willing to put some, you know, skin in the game or equity into the game to get this work done, I don't know. So he did kind, I mean, I...
It's hard to say.
I think it'd have to be kind of symbiotic between him, the landlord, and then us, you know, kind of towards the end. I don't think anybody here is opposed to any of this. I think any kind of development down there for something that's, is welcomed with open arms, but I think there's a lot of ambiguity, you know, right now as I see it.
Yeah, I think, I think he needs to, I believe it was the property owner that submitted the actual plan that you have in front of you, so that's a good sign. He also, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, they very recently hooked into the sewer, right? Or was it water or sewer?
Yes, last summer.
Last summer. So that is also a good, and I think that was in anticipation of potentially having this used as some sort of food establishment. So those are all positive steps, but I agree, I think, without the property owner here where we can ask, you know, questions, it's hard for us to make a decision.
You know, where's his tolerance level financially, or...
Well, is it fair to say, though, that assuming they can control the parking spaces that they claim to have on this site, that they have more than sufficient parking for this use?
They would have enough parking for the, for the use showing the parking spaces in the front, but, you know, again, I'm not sure how they would control it.
If we, if they can demonstrate how you get pedestrians safely from the back, or even the back, like where the UPS store is, safely from one side to the other, I don't see why we would have to require them to have sufficient parking just in front, as long as they can demonstrate that they can get them there safely. I don't see why that would be a problem, but they have to, I mean, they need, there has to be a sidewalk and at least a paved something to get them there.
Or lighting back there.
Lighting, yeah, right.
Parking is parking in the back. On their own property, right? Not somebody else's.
Or even, so they could even park across here if it were...
But what I'm saying is, I don't know that they would allow that. You know what I'm saying? Like, they'd have to say that they're signing on to that.
Absolutely, yeah, they'd have to come up with an agreement, but if they could do that, which, you know, if none of those businesses are even open, there's no reason why they, you know, can't come up with some agreement. I think there's more than enough parking in that general area to make it work, it's just a safe of getting people.
Between the car.
No.
So.
But it's a sidewalk, too, right? You need to get people...
Oh, you're talking the other side of...
Yes.
82.
I mean, usually when somebody comes in with a site plan, we have the ability to talk to them about, how are you doing this, and where's the lighting, and this is coming to us a little bit.
So what do they want from us specifically now?
I think, I thought that he was going to be here tonight to talk to what he's willing to do, you know, what he's proposing to do, yeah. But he's not here.
Well, so I guess, I guess the question is, asking all the other board members, are we generally favorably inclined to continue to hear the owner and, and the applicant on this thing? I think we are.
Absolutely.
I think that's the best message we can give them at this point.
And at this point, they can't, they can only do two sketch plans, they have to come in with a formal application, so the next thing you would see would be the actual formal site plan.
Okay. Right. Okay.
Are there other issues that have to be addressed other than parking?
Yes. All the items associated with a site plan, right?
Well, right, but I mean, issues that could be insurmountable, other than parking.
Well, Board of Health, he's gonna, I don't, I don't know if he's going to be cooking...
Doesn't need Board of Health, he's connected to the Hamlet Sewer, so he doesn't need Board of Health.
Okay, but there's going to be no issues, like as far as him, you know, if they're going to be cooking in there and stuff like that?
No, I mean, that would all be through the building department.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, the things that would be, that I would look at with a site plan, considering we haven't looked at the site plan ever, is refuse, lighting, landscaping, sidewalks, you know, make sure that the sidewalk is...
ADA accessibility.
And then I think the, the wine bar guy ultimately would like to go to outdoor seating of some sort, but I don't know that he would do that at this round anyway, or come back later for that.
That'd be, that'd be tough, since...
And signage, you know, if there's going to be a sign outside.
In the middle of that, he's got businesses on either side, so I'm not sure where he would put the outside.
There's so much space in the back. There's so much space in the back.
There is.
Concrete patio, it's an umbrella.
Remember when this was discussed, there may be issues with drainage in the back, and I see a number of catch basins in the back of this property, a couple low-lying spots, I don't know if that's a known issue or not, if they're proposing anything back there, any, any, any impact of the drainage back there.
No, and then I don't know if the Planning Board also, you know, considering that in the future, this is just something to leave on, you know, we're hoping to make connections between parking lots and, and make sure that we can safely go from parking lot to parking lot. And in this particular case, I don't know where the, if he didn't really write on the bank building, there's no way to get between the two sites, right?
No, because the road goes behind the post office.
Right.
And there's a drive-through with the bank.
Yeah. So that's another thing, that if, if this was coming to you as a site plan, what you might say to them about connecting the plazas and talk to the, because they do have to all come to an agreement, because some of them might lose parking. Again, I agree that we have more than enough parking in totality out there, it's just who controls what parking and safe movement.
There was some issue when, what was it, one of the auto parts companies came to us, and he wanted to try to do something with Anthony's, or, you know, the Pizza Village there, and he kind of was like, wanted nothing to do with it, so. I know that it was because it was going to eliminate some spots, and he has the catering, like he has a pretty, you know...
But there is a connection, that the back of the Pizza Village connects to the road that connects to, goes all the way through, so there's a connection.
They're talking about interconnecting all the plots there.
So you don't have to go out on, out on 82.
That's what I'm saying, there's going to might be some other...
And that right now is just a concept, so I'm not even sure it's something that...
Do they have any idea how many tables or chairs he might have in them?
He can only have, no, I'm not remembering the numbers.
Occupancy would be 29 or 30, I think.
So that's pretty low.
Yeah.
It's a, the front area of the restaurant would be under 900 square feet.
Wow.
It's not a big space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that in itself would limit probably the amount of traffic you would have there.
Yeah, and the master, the comprehensive plan committee is looking at policies that may require plazas to connect, or put zoning in that require some of that stuff, but, you know, that is a long way, because the Town Board would have to vote on that and agree to it, so, but those are things that are being discussed, to how to make it more functional and keep people off of 82 for those short trips.
So I think we, we should just tell them we'd like to see them come back, but we do need to have them come back in person to actually tell us what the whole plan is.
And ideally combined, right. Yeah, both the building owner and the potential business applicant, okay?
Okay, last but not least...
Last item, 10 Corporate Park. So, Michelle, do you want to give us a quick summary on this?
Yeah, sure. So, again, these were folks that were in front of us, this is for the church in the East Fishkill Corporate Park, and they were before us a few months ago. We had approved the church facility, and we had put a condition that if they wanted to go over a capacity of 150, they needed to come back to the Planning Board. They are requesting that they go to 170, and I believe, I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's 150 seats still on the sanctuary space, but I think they have some other offices, like maybe of a nursery, like a...
Yeah, for our kids' area.
Yeah, nursery school or whatever during the church hours, so they need an extra 20 people, so they want an extra capacity of 20 people to go to 170.
Okay.
And they, and they can meet that, if you want to talk to the building issues.
They can meet, they can meet the 170 for the entire 7900 square feet, but the sanctuary area will still remain at a capacity of 150.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that affect their parking?
It does. They're basically using like the whole area back there for parking, but they are off hours of almost everything else happening back there, so, but the part where we were a bit concerned about parking, which is why we wanted to cap them at 150. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm wondering if there's, if there's anything like with DOT, you know, in terms of the use of that entrance onto 52. You know, when you have offices there, you don't have a great migration of cars all at once, but when, I would imagine when church lets out, right?
Yeah, you're looking at...
You've got a lot of cars leaving, or coming, basically, in a very short window.
So you're probably looking at, for 150 people, you're probably looking at 60, 50, 60 cars, because it's coming in three or four people in a car. You know, there'll be some single people, some couples, so yeah, 50, 60 cars.
So I don't know if we've heard anything about how that's functioning, is this just on Sundays, or?
Well, I know that the soccer park is across the street, so that's probably five times the number of cars that are leasing after a soccer game, so they're directly across the street from...
Oh, if you got, if you got, how many kids are on a soccer team, though? Two teams. I don't think it equates to 150 people leaving a soccer game.
Yeah, but there's, there's multiple fields there.
They all end the same time, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, there's a lot of activity there, but wasn't...
Tournament time, we have police there.
Yeah.
And with traffic.
Yeah, we have, we have to do that at our Washingtonville location sometimes, if that, if that's the case, where there's tons of traffic, we just contact the police and get them there for when the service is...
I just don't know, I don't think anybody's witnessed what, what that looks like.
Have you had a service there yet?
No, we're about four, four, five weeks from running our first service, and when we open, we're probably looking at 75 people sitting in there for the service, we're just trying to plan ahead, you know?
And I know that there was spillover, though, the gentleman that was the building owner that appeared with you, that there was no agreement, but I know that they had spillover from the soccer field, which operates on the weekends...
Right, right.
Into that parking lot across the street. So, in keeping with what Scott's saying, we, I guess we'd have to try to understand that better, because they haven't had a service, but I know that that soccer field gets, I mean, people are parked down the road and...
But I don't know if they all leave at the same time, because kids get their stuff, you know, whatever, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, there's like a kind of changing.
Whereas when you get out of, when you get out of church, everybody just disperses, right?
Right. So I don't know how that looks when, when both things are happening at the same time.
So I don't, to answer your question about DOT, we'd have to ask Brendan, because I don't know that there would be any reason for DOT to look at it, like you would normally have to get a curb cut permit, or there's no highway work permit involved, so I don't know what would be the impetus for them to actually do it.
Well, let's just say, hypothetically, let's just say you put a Starbucks, or a Dunkin' Donuts there, now you got a left turn lane, you got all that stuff.
Right, right.
So it all depends on the intensity, right? I understand it's just, it's just once a week, Sundays, or is it?
That's it, once a week.
But I don't know that we just want to ignore it, either.
No, I know, I think we'd have to ask him how that would be, so there's two things, that, ask him how that would be, but also with the parking, right now our parking requirement, I think is only one space for every five seats in the church, so they have more than enough parking per our zoning.
One car for five seats?
Yeah, because they were, they were assuming when they made that parking requirement that a family would be coming in, right? So, you know...
The average family today is...
It's much smaller. Average is two, maybe four, two.
But so is there just one service per Sunday?
There's 10 and 11:30.
So two services?
Yeah.
And you said on average, 50 to 60?
Yeah, so our volunteers, you know, our volunteers and the people that attend, so perfect, I'm, I'm at the Fort Jervis location.
Yes.
We have 100 and, we have 110 parking spaces, and the transition between services, we go out onto Route 209, never have any issues with it, because people don't, it's not like the whole worship center, like, and everybody gets in their car at once.
Yes.
People mingle, and they get their kids, and, yeah, so...
Oh, it's staggered.
It's a staggered, yeah, it's staggered. It's, and then some people are coming for the 11:30 service at 11:15, and others are walking in at 11:45. That's just the way it works. Yeah, so there's a, it's a pretty good stagger that's happening.
So I think we're really talking about a fairly minor increase, though, in terms of number of parking spaces that may be required?
The increase related to the kids, the companions?
The increase is related to that transition time.
Oh, the transition time.
So like, so if our 10, 10 o'clock service is letting out, if we're like, if we have people waiting in the lobby for the next service, like, we just, we just want to, we want to honor the numbers, and so it's like, there might be 20 people standing in the lobby.
I thought you said you had an AM and a PM service?
No, 10 and 11:30, so like back-to-back services.
Okay, back-to-back.
Yeah.
Okay. So are you anticipating that you're asking for this additional, just for safety purposes? Because you feel as if you might?
Yeah, I don't want to, like, if we set, if we put 120 chairs in the worship center, and then, and there's 120 people in there, and then there's 20 kids, I don't want to go over the 150 numbers.
I understand, because our prior approval was for 150.
Yeah, you're approving 150. We're, we're willing to do whatever you guys are telling us to do.
Where'd the 150 come from, though?
That came from the parking and the, and the fire inspector.
I think fire.
Yeah, and they agreed to that.
Is that a critical number, then, if it came from the fire inspector?
So the reason, the, it was difficult, because the space is almost 8,000 square feet. So we were trying to figure out what the capacity was based on the sanctuary space, because you had to have the exits and the chairs laid out, and they gave us a floor pan plan. This was difficult to come to a capacity, but because the space was so large, we were concerned that there could be, you know, creep, mission creep into the, into that other space. So that's why we were very careful about what we said and how we said it in the original approval. But they, what they realized was...
So we determined the 150, is that it?
Yes, we did.
Yes.
And that was based on parking and the fire.
And they accepted that, but then, as the congregation...
So we'd have to go back and revisit that computation, then, to see if you can justify the 170 versus just arbitrarily bumping up, right?
Oh, we did, yeah, we did, yeah. We revisited that and agreed that we could up it to 170 for the entire building, but the sanctuary has to remain at no more than 150.
So what changed in that?
Well, the original analysis did not have the seating. They finally gave us a seating plan to show how they're going to set up the worship area. So we were able to come up with an actual number of chairs.
A hard number versus an estimate, so to speak, okay.
Yeah, we were just working with square footages prior to that.
So where do the other 20 people go if there's only 150 seats?
The other 20 are in kids, like the kids are in...
The kids, they get somebody watching. They get somebody watching.
So if you, if you have a family of five come in, two people go into the worship center, three kids go into the kids area.
Got it.
So a hundred and fifty people sitting in the worship center, worship service is over, they pick their kids up and they go out the door. With the number one fifty, we could only put a hundred and twenty seats, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty seats in the worship center, and then twenty kids, you know?
I guess they have no, typically have around twenty children in the.
Yeah, anywhere from twenty and thirty, yeah.
Sunday school, in the Sunday school.
In the Sunday school classes.
Okay. So, and we know that the kids obviously aren't going to be utilizing parking spaces, so it's really just arbitrary for that part of it, just as a kind of a technicality maybe, or?
Right. I mean, the concern is that it's a big space, the, the parking is, you know, and, and right now we have a parking requirement that is pretty, it's just, it's not, it's not a conservative parking.
Correct.
It's pretty liberal. So, you know, um, we might have to modify that because, I mean, I think, I mean, I don't know how many cars, but I mean, church is something where you usually do come in more, you know, there's multiple people in a car usually when you're at church services, so.
Is this, uh, the building, are you the only user of this building or I'm not?
On Sundays, yeah, nobody else is there. It's, there's a, there's a manufacturer behind us, the space next to us is empty.
And you say behind you, in the same building or different?
Yeah, it's behind us in the same building, but they only have, they have seven parking spaces they use during the week.
Okay.
And there's still an unoccupied portion that technically.
There's unoccupied next to us, like, looking from the street, there's unoccupied.
But they would have to come in front of you if they.
But there's, they're tiny little spaces, like.
Right. So in total, you're utilizing how many square feet of the building, including the sanctuary?
Seventy-nine twenty-eight.
Yeah, seventy-nine hundred.
And in total, what is the total square footage of the building?
The building's probably fifteen thousand.
Yeah, it's just under, just under sixteen thousand.
Okay.
So you're, so I have. But you're utilizing fifty percent of the building. Pardon me? With the manufacturing and this use, the fire department got all proper fire separation and all that was already previously looked at?
Well, that's not something, we look at the, the code review guy, not him, but the.
When we get the building, yeah, when we got the building plans, we've looked at that. So you got the proper fire separation.
Yeah, and it's all office. All the other occupants in that building are office type use.
Other than the manufacturing.
Yeah.
And they made them.
I think there's got to be some separation between manufacturing and office, right?
I don't think that there's manufacturing.
I don't think they actually do the work there.
There's no manufacturing in that building.
It's a company that isn't, like, it's a, it's a company that oversees manufacturing. They don't do the manufacturing.
They don't do the physical manufacturing.
It's all office space.
Yeah, yeah.
Manufacturing in some of the other buildings, like thirty corporate park, but not up in ten. So then just, again, I don't want to get repetitive. Are they going to be utilizing the parking spaces on Sunday for the entire facility? So technically.
Well, they're going to be using it for the whole back area.
Oh, we actually figured it out, that we're only using, if you go in the back parking lot.
Half of the back parking lot, yeah.
Okay.
Because we have plenty of parking in the front.
They have a hundred and seven on that parcel.
Yeah.
Spaces. And, and wherever that section is, it's all ADA accessible to the building.
Yes, pretty much. Okay.
And handicap parking and all that stuff where it needs to be.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, you'd have to get, everybody would have to come there.
It's all right.
Are you okay with it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Even if there's overlap?